So, good morning. My name is Justin Jackson and I'm the Executive Director of the Community Development Administration. Today's public hearing is for the Home ARP Plan. And I will go over a summary of the Home ARP Plan, the draft that has been posted on the CDA website and presented to the community. Today's public hearing again is allowing for a public comment on that draft. And we are accepting any comments or any questions as it relates to the draft. I will be going over the summary of the draft and where we are thus far. And we will then have additional comment from any other panelists that are on from the City of St. Louis. I will make sure to allow for time for anyone that has comment or questions as it relates to the draft or anything that they would like to submit today. We did receive some questions in writing in advance. I will acknowledge those questions and comments that have come in in advance at a later part of the public hearing. So, those comments that were received in writing will be acknowledged first. And then we will follow up with anyone who is participating on today's call with any additional comments that they may have. So, as an entitlement community under classification by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, the City of St. Louis receives annual funding allocations from federal government, from the federal government to fund activities that address community needs. Additionally, as a funding recipient, the City of St. Louis is required to submit to HUD a Home ARP Plan that describes how the city intends to utilize these federal funds. The city's lead agencies responsible for the submission of this plan to HUD are the Community Development Administration, CDA, and the Department of Human Services, DHS. In accordance with HUD regulations, CDA makes available several documents for public review. Please note that the final version of today's Home ARP Plan upon submission will be available through the CDA website, which is www.stlouis-mo.gov backslash CDA. We encourage you to periodically check the CDA website for news and updates as it relates to this funding source as well as other funding sources awarded through CDA and the city in general. So, the purpose of this public hearing is to receive feedback regarding the Home ARP draft while allowing for the views of citizens, public agencies, and other interested parties to be heard. The City of St. Louis made available a draft Home ARP Plan that identified federal funds made available and the range of activities that the City of St. Louis may undertake. The draft plan was made available for review on June 14th, 2022, here at the offices of the Community Development Administration at 1520 Market Suite 2000, as well as on the City of St. Louis website at the URL that I just mentioned previously, www.stlouis-mo.gov backslash CDA. In addition, a virtual public hearing scheduled for today has been put in place to allow for public comment and allow for feedback regarding the plan. As I mentioned earlier, the notice regarding the draft and public hearing was posted in, was posted on June 14th. It was also posted in various locations and emailed to interested parties who've expressed interest in receiving updates on funding availability through CDA, advertisements indicating the availability of the draft report, the solicitation of public comments for the draft report, and the notice of a public hearing to allow for any comments on the Home ARP draft report appeared in the St. Louis American on Thursday, June 16th of 2022. So, a general overview or a general summary of the draft plan that was posted at that time. The American Rescue Plan, ARP, appropriated $5 billion nationwide to provide housing services and shelter to individuals experiencing homelessness and/or housing insecurity in 2021. In the latter part of 2021, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development awarded the City of St. Louis the sum of $10,635,523,000 in Home American Rescue Plan Act Funding, or Home ARP Funding. That funding was made available through the Home Investment Partnership Act of the American Rescue Plan. And it was allocated to the City of St. Louis through the Community Development Administration. In order to utilize this funding, the City of St. Louis must develop and submit to HUD for approval, a Home ARP Allocation Plan, which describes the intended use of funds and identify any preferences for eligible populations for usage of these funds, as well as activities. The development of the plan is based on requirements of Community Planning and Development CPD Notice 21-10. And it involves also a requirement of stakeholder consultation as well as community engagement. Eligible activities that may be funded with Home ARP include the development and support of affordable housing, tenant-based rental assistance, the provision of supportive services such as housing counseling, homelessness prevention, childcare, job training, legal services, case management, moving costs, rental applications, and rent assistance. And lastly, the acquisition and development of non-cryerit shelter units. In developing our Home ARP Plan, the City of St. Louis conducted discussions amongst city departments, specifically the Community Development Administration, the Department of Human Services, the Mayor's Office, the Office of the Disabled, as well as consultation efforts with the St. Louis Public Housing Authority and the St. Louis Continuum of Care. Throughout these discussions, as well as through data-driven needs assessments and gap analysis. One of the major gaps identified in the city's housing inventory is access to affordable housing, especially for our extremely low housing population, excuse me, especially for our extremely low-income housing population and those at risk of housing instability. Specifically for our homeless population, the need for more permanent housing has been evident through annual point-in-time census counts and housing inventory counts conducted in St. Louis for some time now. The notion that more permanent housing is needed to truly address the needs of homeless, of the homeless population and those at risk of homelessness has been known for quite some time and has been further reinforced through recent meetings as well as data collection. Following our meetings and through all of our consultation efforts, it was apparent that the need for more permanent housing for the homeless population continues to be a priority for the City of St. Louis, its service providers, and the homeless population itself. People experiencing a housing crisis or fleeing from an unsafe situation need to find a place to stay quickly. And the development of more affordable housing across St. Louis for both our unhoused and homeless population as well as our population at risk of homelessness can assist with filling this gap. The City of St. Louis Home ARP Affordable Housing Production Plan focuses on the establishment of no less than 24 to 40 units for occupancy by qualifying populations. The qualifying populations are those who are homeless or those who at risk of being homeless or experiencing housing instability. Development of these units will help address the ongoing need for additional permanent housing resources within the City of St. Louis. And the establishment of a minimum of 24 to 40 new individual units utilizing Home ARP funds is the intent of our plan with the establishment of those 24 to 40 units by the end of 2024. The development of these units will occur on land currently owned by the City of St. Louis and through utilizing land currently within CDA's land bank inventory. The city will ensure that site control is maintained throughout this development process in addition to proper environmental review of any and all future site locations. Part of the public hearing process today allows for comments and questions to be submitted to the city and for us to address any questions or concerns that may be outstanding or that may have been submitted to the City of St. Louis. In response to our draft plan that was posted, we did receive feedback from some interested parties. And I will go ahead and share some of that information right now. We did receive a written notice from Tina Bush, who is a licensed mental health professional who has worked with the severely mental ill, unhoused individuals for the last 10 years. And I'm going to summarize what she submitted, but in short. While I see you doing this work, a severe shortage of housing and other resources for the unhoused community. As an outreach professional, I find this frustrating and I want to help people rebuild the safety net of resources needed to either provide additional supportive housing or provide more resources for our unhoused population. We have ten encampments that spring up in our region because there are not enough shelters, particularly low-barrier shelters and safe havens. And people remain unhoused for multiple years because of the lack of affordable housing and the lack of diverse affordable housing types. Please fund diverse housing projects so that we can join cities like Houston and others to end chronic homelessness. Submitted by Christine Tina Bush. We also have a fact sheet that was submitted by Isaac Fox-Polsen. I believe he may be on this call. I'm going to summarize what he submitted via his fact sheet. But in the event that he's on this call, definitely would allow for him to expand on this further later on. Okay, actually, he's here. And I would like to allow him to be able to to present on his fact sheet that was submitted to the city.
Thank you very much. Is there any possibility I can show the fact sheet on the screen?
Give me a minute to promote you to panelist so you have that ability.
Thank you.
Okay, you should be able to now.
Thank you. Okay, good morning all. And thank you for the opportunity to present some data on the need for affordable supportive housing for persons experiencing homelessness in the City of St. Louis. My name is Isaac Fox-Polsen and I am a data analyst with the Institute for Community Alliances, or ICA. And I analyze data gathered by the St. Louis City Continuum of Care, or COC. The data I am presenting is from a snapshot of households experiencing homelessness who have requested assistance from the COC as of June 14, 2022, and was pulled from the publicly available coordinated entry dashboard. A link to the dashboard is shown on the fact sheet in the second box from the top currently on screen. The number, sorry, the snapshot of data pulled on June 14th showed that the COC had 772 households experiencing homelessness who were actively seeking housing assistance from the COC's coordinated entry system. And of the 772 households, 210 are living in places not meant for habitation, also commonly referred to as living on the streets. The remaining 562 households were living in emergency shelters, transitional housing, and other homeless situations. The current length of time these households have been homeless and waiting for housing placements is high. Of the 772 households experiencing homelessness, half have been homeless for at least 255 days, which is eight and a half months. In addition, half of the 772 households have also spent at least 95 days or over three months waiting for housing placement. Using Home ARP dollars to build affordable housing units, which are intended for those experiencing homelessness, will help reduce the length of time people spend homeless within the city. In addition to building affordable housing units targeted toward homeless individuals, these affordable housing units need to have onsite supportive services, which allow clients to have improved health, wellness, and long-term housing stability. As seen here, of the 772 households, almost half of these households have disclosed a mental health disorder. Since disclosure of a mental health disorder is optional, the percent of households where one or more persons has a mental health disorder is likely higher. Similarly, out of the 772 households, nearly one-third of the households have disclosed a substance use disorder. Disclosure of this information is optional as well. So, the percent of households where one or more persons has a substance use disorder is likely higher. In conclusion, the data from the St. Louis City Continuum of Care show a need not only for affordable housing, but for site-based affordable housing targeted toward those experiencing homelessness with supportive services that will help clients have improved health, wellness, and long-term stability, ultimately resulting in a reduction of persons who are homeless within the city. If anyone has any questions, I am best reached at the contact information located here on the screen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I think Isaac has finished his presentation and we can go ahead with closing him out as a panelist. Thank you. We receive another public statement from the Community Builders Network of Metro St. Louis, submitted by Linda Nagouin. I may say this incorrectly, but Nagouin. And the statement that was provided is for today's public hearing. It is an official public statement in support of funding for St. Louis City's Community Development Corporation, CDCs, with HUD's Home ARP Funds. And I will go ahead and share some highlights of the written notice that she provided. "On behalf of the Community Builders Network and over a dozen of community development corporations, CDCs throughout the City of St. Louis, our membership represents, we are seeking your support for additional funding for CDCs for the development and support of affordable housing, as well as the funding of supportive services such as housing counseling, case management, and homelessness prevention services. CDCs have developed, rehabbed, and managed thousands of affordable housing units throughout St. Louis and need the Community Development Administration's continued and increased funding support to stay in business. As local CDCs continue to perform place-based neighborhood transformation work in both historically disinvested neighborhoods and growing neighborhoods of opportunity, we want to ensure our CDCs can continue to operate and remain impactful for our low-income families. Over the course of COVID-19, many CDCs have been leveraging their direct access to and relationships with local residents and businesses to provide critical frontline services without financial reimbursements from the city, from distributing food and PPE at the peak of the pandemic to organizing town hall meetings to receive community feedback. CDCs have continued to work hard every day to identify and address the needs of St. Louis City residents. For CDCs to continue to be functional and impactful, CDCs need to increase their funding to cover for operational and direct service costs. The following are a number of activities Home ARP Funds can be utilized for: investment in CDC operations and streamlined reimbursements; funding for affordable housing development and place-based programming; preference points for CDCs applying for funding. In addition to housing development, ARP funding should be allocated to support place-based programming that meets residents where they live and address needs that they have identified. It is important to note that while providing operating support for neighborhoods and qualifying census tracts is important, CDCs serving areas of opportunity are working to build affordable housing that low-income residents can access as well. And supporting this work is critical for retaining neighborhood diversity and preventing displacements. Our community has a long history of coming together during difficult moments. We no doubt, we have no doubt that the city's continued collaborative efforts will move St. Louis forward in progressive, dynamic, and vibrant way. Together with our member organizations, the Community Builders Network of Metro St. Louis and staff are willing and ready to work with the city to move our region forward by addressing the needs of the most vulnerable and building on neighborhoods where everyone wants to live, work, and play. Sincerely, Linda Nagouin, Executive Director, Community Builders Network of Metro St. Louis." I would like to say thank you very much for submitting that written statement. This will go on record as a written statement being received through today's public hearing as well as received through our office. We also received a written testimony from Carly Smale of the St. Patrick Center. And she's submitting the attached written testimony for the record for today's Home ARP public hearing. And to whom it may concern, on behalf of the members of the St. Louis Continuum of Care Advocacy Committee, we want to express concern that the HUD requirements to consult with the local COC and public and private providers serving qualifying populations could have been carried out more effectively before developing its Home ARP allocation plan. Per HUD guidance, CDA was required at minimum to consult with the COC, the COC serving the jurisdictions, geographic area, homeless service providers, domestic violence providers, public agencies that address the needs of qualifying populations, et cetera. Also noteworthy, though not expressly required, people who have lived the experiences of the Home ARP qualifying population should be consulted for both their knowledge and expertise, but also because they are members of our community who will be most affected by the outcomes of this allocation plan. So, specifically, the consultation process, the data collected, the description of the unmet housing services, needs of qualifying populations, and our areas highlighted in the draft by, excuse me, in the written testimony by Ms. Smale, and allowing for additional participation in the creation of the plan by experts in the field is, and I'm paraphrasing, but this is the general gist of the written testimony that has been submitted. An appropriate level of consultation would include the opportunity for members of the COC providers servicing and advocating for qualifying populations, longtime housing agencies, owners and operators of permanent supportive housing, and those with lived experience to meet with CDA after the public hearing to discuss local data on the gaps in housing and collaboratively develop the strongest Home ARP Plan possible, a plan that will result in housing infrastructure that will add critical new dimensions to our current housing offerings and serve the needs of our most vulnerable, underserved neighbors for decades to come. We ask for this opportunity to work with you on behalf of St. Louis unhoused residents in gravest needs. Thank you for your time and attention. So, thank you to Ms. Smale for her written testimony. We have had consultation meetings or consultation meetings with the St. Louis COC. And we do expect to have additional meetings in the future with the St. Louis COC as we get further along in the next phases of the Home ARP Plan. The initial portion that we are at today, however, is the initial general framework of the city's intention to develop more affordable permanent supportive housing with Home ARP Funds. There's a question that came in. I will read the question. "A priority of affordable supportive housing seems important. I will admit, I do not have the development experience, but 24 to 40 units seems like a small number of units for nine million. Can you elaborate on what these units would be like? Is this going to be new buildings with individual units?" We still have a period of time before we completely... Hold on for just a second. We still have a period of time before we completely have all of the details finalized in terms of what the actual units would look like themselves. But what we envision is the opportunity to create more affordable housing, specifically permanent supportive housing for our extremely low-income population. We want to create units that are accessible for those who may have disabilities. And we want to make sure that these units are inclusive of all modern standards and are of a universal design. While 24 to 40 units may not sound, may sound like a small number as it relates to nine million dollars. In today's atmosphere and in today's current landscape, we've seen housing production costs very much at an inflated cost as what we've experienced in years past throughout the post, in the post-pandemic world. The reality is that we have a labor shortage as well as an influx of labor costs that have very much increased as well as supply chain issues that continue to affect housing production, not only throughout our department, but with the city as well, the city as a whole. So, our housing production efforts, especially for new residential housing developments, has very much increased over the last two years since the beginning of the pandemic. It's our belief that we want to ensure that the estimate that we've provided in terms of the 24 to 40 units is very much the minimum of what we plan to create with Home ARP Funds, specifically for the unhoused population. There's another question answer in the chat box. This is going back to Ms. Smale, Carly Smale. She's stating that she is present and she would like to have the opportunity to read a section of the testimony for the record. So, I would like to give her access to be able to present her comment.
Thank you, Justin. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you turn your mic up a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, I can hear you better now.
Okay, great. Yeah, I don't need to read the whole thing, but there is a section on the consultation that I would like to present. So, as described in the St. Louis Home ARP Funds Plan, all conversations from September 2021 until late May of 2022 were held between the CDA and other city officials. In late May 2022, the Housing Authority was asked to complete a survey about the plan. COC consultation was limited to a brief online survey circulated to COC member organizations and their staff via a message sent on the listserv. This listserv message was sent June 8th. Listserv users were given a matter of days to respond after the plan had been in development for nine months. CDA scheduled a meeting with the COC Board with no stated agenda for 24 hours later on 6/29. Limited board representation was available along with reps from the Mayor's Office, DHS, and a few other COC member organizations. During this time, it was noted that this meeting, along with the survey, was the consultation that would encompass the HUD requirements for homeless service provider and DV service provider consultation. The results of this survey have yet to be disclosed, so it is unknown if the survey results represent the broad range of COC members or meet the expectations of HUD. The attending COC members of this meeting strongly encourage a pause on the draft process for additional consultations to provide more robust comment. While the dialogue was encouraging, numerous expert providers serving qualified populations have not had the same opportunity. And without their feedback, the plan lacks what is required for community stakeholder input. An appropriate level of consultation would include the opportunity for members of the COC, providers serving and advocating for qualifying populations, longtime housing agencies, owners and operators of permanent supportive housing, and those with lived experience to meet with the CDA after the public hearing to discuss local data and the gaps on the gaps in housing and collaboratively develop the strongest Home ARP Plan possible. A plan that will result in housing infrastructure that will add a critical new dimension to our current housing offerings and serve the needs of our most vulnerable underserved neighbors for decades to come. We ask for this opportunity to work with you on behalf of St. Louis unhoused residents in greatest need. Thank you.
Thank you. So that comment will become part of public record and it will be responded to accordingly. There is also I want to make sure that this, this, this individual is allowed to speak. I read your written testimony earlier, but I do see that Christine Bush is also a participant. If this person is wanting to speak, I would like to allow her access. And at this, we can only have one speaker at a time. So while Ms. Bush speaks, thank you.
Hi, I want to just underline that we need diverse kinds of housing. Not only, not everyone fits into an apartment living on their own. Some people need more assisted housing. Other people may need like rooms to rent. Those, there has to be a diversity of housing in order to be able to house more of the folks who have various kinds of needs. And I really do hope that there is more collaboration with COC and with people who are in community mental health organizations who are working with folks who are specifically working with folks who are unhoused and have severe and persistent mental illness. Because what I see as someone who does work with folks who have severe and persistent mental illness and are unhoused for many years is that the, the one size fits all doesn't fit for them. So I really strongly, strongly urge that there's a community effort and not just an effort of a few people to, to push this through. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, there was a question in the chat box also in terms of will these public testimonies be made available on the CDA website? Yes, we will make sure that all we will make sure that all public comments that have been submitted today are made available on the CDA website. We will more than likely place that with the under a tagline of frequently asked questions and comments as it relates to home ARP, the home ARP public hearing. So we can, so that we can ensure that transparency is maintained throughout, not only today's call, but the ongoing process of the development and implementation of home ARP funds. As it stands, those are the questions that have, that were received for today's public hearing. I believe we have addressed all of the questions that were submitted to us in written format as well as the questions of those who are attending today. Having all questions been answered.
You have a raised hand.
We have a raised hand. Who, where do you?
Yeah, if you can open your participants panel, maybe you don't have it open.
Okay, yes, I still see, I see Liam John. John Liam, excuse me.
Hello, I would like to submit mine via audio.
Go ahead.
The city of St. Louis goes down in history for some of the most obvious violations of human rights and bigotry. Housing is one of the most told tales in the city. When the city has control over housing, chaos happens for generations to come. I do not want to look back into the untold histories and say, I lived during that and did not, did nothing to stop it. And people making this decision should be considering the same. A great deal of the generational conditions for housing instability can be attributed to the city's actions. We look back, we can look back however far we want. But the more recent ones include Mill Creek Valley, which was a landing ground for many groups of people. But it ended up being an area for the black community through redlining and covenants on deeds forced and keeping people there. And then the city proceeded to cut the utilities and basic supports to the area. Creating this narrative about black residents, which was the result of the city's actions. Next was the narrative about the quote unquote amazing public housing facility called Prudigo. And the city brought many past residents of Mill Creek and other areas to force further these 33 11 story high rises. The city once again created conditions that painted narratives about black residents in these complexes. And then the Ville is another one. And so when we look at all of these projects and housing developments, public housing developments that the city has undergone. These catastrophes and racial bigotries. The concern I have is if the city is planning to run their own permanent supportive housing. My qualms are not with this administration, but rather future administrations to come. They have a stake in this decision as well. Residents of permanent supportive housing should be allowed to reside in their homes permanently with trusted support. And not too much fluctuation. So if the city changes partnerships and administrations frequently, the project is doomed to fail like Prudigo, and I don't want to see that happen again. People still are facing like are still experiencing what Prudigo was. And when we must learn from our past, political pressures, priorities, and persuasions will inevitably change over the decades long life of a permanent supported housing community. Permanent supportive housing is difficult, evolving, mission-based, human-centered work that should not be influenced by the whims of politics. We must think about the lives of the tenants and uphold fundamental mission of permanent supportive housing above political conflicts of interest. If the city struggles to keep a contract for Biddlehouse, how do they expect to create a public permanent supportive housing program? And when the HUD affordable and supportive housing policy long ago moved away from exclusively government-owned housing models in favor of public and private partnerships, why should we be going back? Why go back when there are organizations that do it well and keep people housed and keep people trusting their housing? Tenants of public permanent supportive housing need the stability they lacked while homeless. They deserve better than needless drastic changes to their housing and services every few years. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that comment. Teka Childress has submitted a question in the chat box that she would like to speak.
Hey, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Justin.
No problem.
Didn't want to jump ahead of my turn just for that, but thank you very much for calling on me. I submitted something in writing, but you probably just got it. So I'm going to basically just speak briefly on what I submitted. I'd like to address three aspects of the home art plan as it was recently presented on June 14th. The consultation requirement, the preference section identifying the focus population and the city's current plan to own the development. Regarding the consultation requirement. HUD obviously is listed has very specific requirements on engagement, which we have not fully met to date. But I listened to what you said, Justin, and I believe you. And I look forward to much more participation by the COC, by persons with lived experience, by experts in the field for a long time. Consultation is actually necessary, but even more importantly is collaboration. Not only to build the best possible plan, one that really brings all the best minds and all the best ability to this tremendous need, but it also builds public trust when the city really engages its citizens, its residents in building a plan together that impacts its residents. So really look forward to that. Hope that there are many more not just consultations, but actual collaboration to build the best plan. Regarding the preferences, I went into great length, offering data, some of which Isaac has presented and talked about some of the own data I had from years of working as an outreach worker with BJC Behavioral Health. I saw people, as Tina described, who for years have lived outside with tremendous, under tremendous trauma. Frequently, in my experience, struggling greatly to to stay housed in the housing options that we have provided to them. I, my last year at BJC, I helped house seven people who lost their housing. I saw numerous people move into housing where they were completely isolated, only to abandon their home. And I saw others who lost their home to many people who kind of overtook their home, who had moved in with them. So it raised for me my last year at BJC that not only do we need housing of a different type than tenant-based housing, but housing with more supports, onsite supports. But we might even need really creative new models of housing for people who desperately need housing, who have been unhoused for generations with serious mental illness and with substance use disorders. This population is now under target by our state legislature. They can no longer be on state land. It has become illegal for them to be there. And we need to find a solution of housing that really meets their needs as population we've long left outside. So regarding preferences, I hope that this money can be used to come up with creative solutions for those who have been long outside with serious mental illness and substance use disorder. My last point about the city's owning the development. I was concerned when I heard this because I, in my experience, I have seen that people who are living outside demand from us tremendous flexibility to meet them exactly, to meet their needs exactly as they exist. And not to create barriers that make it very difficult for them to stay in housing. This kind of flexibility demands a lot of creativity, a lot of ability, a lot of ability to be able to change, to meet different needs. And I don't believe that by the very nature, city governments are the ones who can do this best. And if I look at, for instance, at Biddle and at Jefferson Spaces, I've been tremendously grateful for their work and the shelter and the kind of transitional shelter housing they've provided. They've helped a lot of people tremendously. But the very people they have not helped are the people who are living outside in tents and in places not meant for human habitation. Those folks need a different response with a lot greater flexibility. And so one of the things I hope in our collaboration is to really discuss the possibility of, of asking the city to allow people who have long time worked in the field of housing for people with serious disabilities to allow them to enter their expertise and to provide this kind of housing. So that's my comment. I'm grateful to be here today. Thanks for this opportunity.
Teka, thank you very much for your comments and I will, I will look for that, that written submission that you, that you provided, but your verbal submission will be a part of today's record. We have another request for testimony, Cynthia Duffy on behalf of Gateway Housing First. Feel free to go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Justin. This is Cynthia Duffy and I work for Gateway Housing First. Gateway Housing First is a nonprofit, mission-driven developer owner, operator of permanent supported housing serving St. Louis City and County. And on behalf of Gateway Housing First, I want to thank CDA for this opportunity to offer comments to the city's draft home ARPA allocation plan. My comments on the proposed plan will focus on three primary areas. The plan's preferences, the need for flexibility in the plan to encourage and allow for project applicants to offer innovative innovative housing solutions to respond to the needs of the most underserved. And the city's plan to own the home ARPA housing development. After reviewing the city's draft plan, we're pleased to see that those consulted offered feedback and supported the use of home ARPA for the development of new permanent supported housing communities. Yet we urge leadership through this allocation plan to prioritize these rare housing production resources as HUD intended. For the development of the affordable housing we lack most to reduce the impacts of homelessness on our most vulnerable unhoused neighbors. Specifically, we urge the city home ARPA plan to include a preference for permanent supported housing projects prioritized applicants for extremely low income. Unhoused and disabled, who also need specialized behavioral health and substance use treatment supports, including other disabled households who may benefit from these services. Understanding that HUD requires a description of the unmet need among those who are unhoused and requires said specialized support services to justify a preference, we offer the following. Gateway Housing First sees firsthand the need for permanent supportive housing for those we believe should be prioritized. Our housing waitlist alone can attest to the need for the specialized accommodating, supportive, low barrier housing and short supply. We currently have over 250 households on our waiting list. By far, our housing in greatest demand are four sites with onsite clinical treatment and case management supports. In all instances, those waiting to access our PSH with onsite support services require more intensive treatment and case management supports. Such supports are needed for behavioral health related disabilities. And in most instances, supports are also needed to manage a co-occurring substance use disorder and/or one or more chronic physical health condition. It must be acknowledged that long periods of homelessness, repeat trauma, addiction, and untreated mental illness creates a chaotic life. Relationships from the streets extend into the home, apartment units get run over and out of the client's control, creating unhealthy conflicts and stress to the surrounding community. Improved wellness takes time. When untreated for years, active symptoms of mental illness that interfere with daily functioning require intensive, individualized treatment. For some, onsite treatments and supports are critical to their ability to stay housed, remain engaged in their treatment, and ultimately achieve improved health and wellness. There is a significant unmet need among our unhoused for specialized permanent supported housing with onsite treatment supports. The lack of this housing has greatly contributed to the doubling of the number of chronically homeless persons in our community over the past four years. Out of the 88,000 individuals in our region with disabilities that impact their ability to work, only 2,000 subsidized units are designed for those living with disabilities. Black residents are three times as likely to be impacted by a disability. And black households are four times more likely to experience homelessness in our community. The lack of historic public investment in specialized permanent supported housing for extremely low income disabled households has resulted in higher rates of homelessness and chronic homelessness amongst those with disabilities and particularly those with behavioral health related disabilities. According to the city's 2019, 2020 Affordable Housing Study conducted by RISE. Between 2015 and 19, nearly 1,200 rental units were developed with government subsidies, local, state, and federal combined. Of those produced, only 30% or 39 units are restricted for extremely low income households or those with incomes at or below 30% of the AMI. And only 12% or 148 units are restricted for low income households or those at or below 50% of the AMI. Specialized PHS, PSH models exist locally and have successfully provided housing stability to high needs households with disabilities. In some cases for decades, but need far outpaces supply. Our community has relied too heavily on tenant-based rental assistance used in scattered site rentals owned by traditional landlords for those needing permanent supported housing. used in scattered-site rentals owned by traditional landlords for those needing permanent-supported housing. Scattered-site leasing models work well for many, but it also leaves countless others without the right-fit housing opportunities needed to achieve housing stability. Home ARPA allocation preferences that prioritize these funds for the development of permanent-supported housing designed for this subpopulation is an encouraging opportunity to close the housing gap for the most underserved by existing affordable housing systems. It must be included in our city's allocation plan as a certain preference. Absent a clear preference that defines our home ARPA priority will reduce access for our most vulnerable neighbors. Those who have the resources and ability to respond quickly to application periods will gain access to these units, and those who require outreach and engagement and application supports will not. Um, moving on to the need for flexibility in land use, site selection, and land configuration, we also ask the city to invite creativity and expertise through their NOFA process. Rather than prescriptively assuming the location, unit size, development, and operating budgets and design, consider the benefits of opening up a competition that encourages development plans that are innovative and comprehensively respond to the needs of those to be served that offer sustainable housing and support service plans for the duration of the home compliance period. And finally, I'd like to address the city's plan to own and operate these permanent-supported housing communities to be developed with home ARPA. In our years of developing and operating permanent-supported housing for extremely low-income households with disabling behavioral health conditions, there have been countless lessons learned, many of them directly here at GHF, and others via the experiences of our many community partners. We and other experts in this niche, affordable housing, including Horizon Housing, St. Pat's, Peter and Paul and Doorways, to name a few, have built a library of knowledge that informs all aspects of our mission-based work. We ask that you consider the benefits of allowing those experts who have built this font of knowledge through experience to be given the opportunity to apply their expertise with this funding to increase their capacity to serve this vulnerable population. It makes good sense to build capacity among trusting community partners who know the issues well, who have long practiced in this field. PSH development requires intensive tenant center planning. From site selection, physical plant design, to fixtures, amenities, and furniture selection, it is impossible to spend too much time planning for the unique housing and services needs of those who will call this community home. It is critical that the experienced operators of those, and those with lived experience, inform all aspects of the development plan. PSH in its design and operations is very different than a typical affordable multifamily housing. Site selection must be driven by the needs of the intended user. There must be an accessible pedestrian path to major transit within proximity, public transit, accessible hospitals, uh, primary and behavioral health care for the underinsured and uninsured, educational opportunities, jobs, churches, parks and recreational opportunities, libraries, pharmacies, and full-service grocery stores must all be available for those needing public transit. And the cost of site preparation to remediate environmental concerns or to ensure comprehensive ADA accessible sign cannot be an afterthought. The physical plant and systems must be laid out to ensure the security and safety of tenants often vulnerable to abuse victimization. The design must be trauma-informed and accessible to those with diverse and physical abilities, with diverse physical abilities, and at all stages of recovery, change. Life-saving features, fixtures, and furnishings should be diverse and should be considered, uh, around the life skills and abilities of those who might reside there. While there may be pros and cons to city-owned PSH, please also consider some of the drawbacks. Home ARPA might not be the only source required to develop the ideal housing communities. Is the city prepared to compete against other affordable housing developers for these resources? Will doing so give rise to an undesirable conflict of interest as city leadership are often asked to support and offer feedback to other funders about their priorities? Is the city able to leverage Medicaid and other service funding to ensure all available resources are leveraged for the most comprehensive services possible? Is the city prepared to make tough landlord decisions and carry out evictions? Are you prepared to accommodate complicated disability circumstances and facilitate understanding and acceptance among neighbors who may press for eviction over second chances? Are you prepared to practice housing first and harm reduction evidence, evidence-based best practices for those most in need of specialized PSH? If the project serves families, are you prepared to negotiate the complicated ethical, uh, issues that arise? Is the city prepared to garner the needed community support to ensure the acceptance and community integration that all households with disabilities are entitled to? Some of these issues, you might imagine, will be relegated to a hired service provider, but the building owner remains responsible to the community and its tenants. An additional area of concern is the need for stability and consistency in the ongoing management and services provided for the tenants. Looking at the city's experience of the owner of Biddlehouse, there has been great instability due to the multiple service providers and the complex and changing relationships between the city and its providers. Operators have come and gone. The project's mission and clients suffer with each operator transition. Service and program continuity seem more important in PSH. Their housing stability, health, and wellness isn't grounded in their individual treatment plans. Transitioning treatment plans from agency to agency when contracts end or provider circumstances change will disrupt treatment progress and the critical relationship building among tenants and providers. We urge the city to lean on your community partner experts to bring their best and most comprehensive development plans, and trust we will carry them out with adjustments as needed for the duration of the home ARPA compliance period as they have for all of our existing PSH. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia, for that comment. And, um, taking note of the time, this brings us at the conclusion of today's public hearing. I'd like to thank everyone for their comments and their, their questions that were submitted today, and we will make sure that all of these comments and questions are incorporated as part of public record. And, uh, as I mentioned earlier, uh, once we, uh, have that completed, we will make sure that all of those comments and questions are part of, are incorporated, um, on the CDA website and, um, in relationship to, um, frequently asked questions and comments as it relates to home ARP funding. So that brings our public hearing today to a close, and I'd like to thank you all for your time.